Like to be able to put up the slide. We actually did a small edit so that it was a little bit more concise. We received quite a large redevelopment overview. So if we're looking at, how do you make this clear? There's two points that we'd like to make regarding the port. We have current infrastructure that is necessary to an industry. Cranes, they require exemption regarding height. More so the, the overall concept of redevelopment. Cranes may be replaced, though could not be as is exemption. It would be, it would be different. That is one part of the redevelopment process that we. I'm trying to match it and ours is a little different than yours, but. Other section question is in regards to any of the area above Dock Road. Is owned by, owned by the city, then there is some conflict. But the central sections along the Dock Road, we do not see a need for exemption in our process. Do you have anything to add to that specifically at this point?
Yeah, can you guys hear me all right?
Yeah.
So first, I apologize, I'm not having much luck with being able to show you my screen so that you can see the presentation that we sent out that was just referenced. So that, you should have received a link that should allow you to take a look at that. And it reflects the things that President Thompson was just presenting to you. If you are able to see that, what you'll see are the things that were just shared. I think I would just break it down into four points. One, that generally speaking, the 45-foot limit is suitable, we think, for the, for the marine, marine use area, generally speaking. And then the two exemptions that make sense to us are, one, an exemption for, for greater than 45 feet to accommodate the high-capacity cranes. And noting that, that should not be necessarily a grandfather clause per se, but should allow for the new, the, the new cranes that'll be developed, which may be located a slightly different spot on the dock. And the other exemption would refer to the area above Dock Road that's within the 7MU. And the reason we're concerned about that is that the Dock, Dock Road is our tsunami evacuation route from the port. And the redevelopment project is focused very much on the making, making sure that Dock Road is hardened and modified to ensure that it is a suitable tsunami evacuation route. And the map, there's a map in that presentation that shows that. So we think it's probably not wise to have a 45-foot limit in an area right above Dock Road on unstable ground, which, which will obviously be affected if there is an earthquake and that, that is needed as a tsunami evacuation route. And finally, as was mentioned previously, there was some talk about a need for an exemption for an observation tower that the port, for the port, and the port has no plans to put up an observation tower. So that's a, I guess, a non-request, but just a clarification. So those were the points. Again, I apologize that, for some reason, I'm not able to share my screen, even though it looks like someone helped set it up so I could be, so I could present. But I don't, not seeing a simple way to actually do that. But if you have access to internet and the link, you might be able to look at it now. If, if not, we may be able to troubleshoot this and make it available later in the meeting, if that's helpful.
I actually printed off.
Happy to do what you can.
Based off the link that we sent today. Okay, this is based off the link that Tom sent. And then the one that we're putting in.
I have a question for either of you or Tom. When we were talking about the general sections to building height limitations, it's 72.0.050. It specifically says stationery boat hoist in a port facility. Does that need to change to say high crane, you know, or high crane, high craning? Or is that wording, is that wording said what we want?
Sorry, is that question for me?
Well, that's for either of you. I'm for I, right, is your either of us, Tom? And I think that our current plans are for redevelopment that would include upgrading cranes. Mobile use has not been.
Is the word boat, 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 is that correctly defined wording?
Yes.
And back there, no. It's essentially, words are such a big thing.
Right. I don't think that could be done differently.
If you're, sorry, I'm just now looking at the language I think you were just referring to.
Yeah, it's one I sent out yesterday or this morning. And it was sort out to the commissioners yesterday. And then I made copies, because I'm a person that doesn't like, I want people to write a copy. But I make copies for all the commissioners, we stop for them when you.
So that, the audio is a little bit, the audio is a little bit dicey, sorry. But I think what you're asking is referencing 17.20.050?
Yes. My question, and I think Mila may answer it, is I believe specifically it says, the following type of structure or structural parts are not subject to the building height limitations of this type. Stationery boat hoist in a port facility. My question to, that you both was, is it an accurate phrase to call the crane, high-class cranes, stationary boat?
Uh.
Our only question is, we have not put forward a concept of a mobile crane at this point, but we are in redevelopment. So far, we have a, only the stationary crane. I guess that would be the, that would, that would be the only word that would be interesting, but I don't think it's a problem, according to our plans.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think for the purposes of the discussion about heights, it might be safer just saying boat hoist or high-capacity crane or some, some statement that doesn't necessarily use the word stationary, just in case that, in case one of those cranes ends up being a mobile crane. That way, you wouldn't have to go back and change it.
That's what I've been wondering, because stationary, because we heard it happen, or mobile aren't theoretically would be, as it says.
Right. I would suggest taking out the word stationary. And the reason I use the term high-capacity crane is because I think that's a slightly more accurate description of what it is. Because a boat hoist could be a very short kind of piece of apparatus. And what we're talking about is some pretty high-profile equipment that'll probably be more, the, the capacity will probably be increased to accommodate larger vessels. So I think that's why I use the term high-capacity crane.
On that first page, the, the presentation page, is that what we would recommend?
That's for a high-capacity crane or the boat?
Yes.
That's what I was asking. Yeah, we want to talk about high-capacity crane or boat?
Boat.
Or, that is, or.
Okay. Commissioner, are you having a question?
Yes, I have a question for Tom. Would you please restate your bullet point number one? I'm not sure that I heard your height correctly, that you were, that you said would be suitable.
So again, I should just clarify that what we're talking about are things that the Port Commission has discussed at some length, so I feel comfortable sharing this. And what we've talked about is that the current 45-foot limit within the marine use zone is generally acceptable, with those exceptions that we just discussed, or exemptions, whatever term makes sense.
Thank you.
So Tom, and then Mila, can you explain again why above Dock Road, you would be pretty once you build a high, you know, no higher than 35? Just so I can make sure.
The road will be wise and it will be used as the emergency rest for the port, and it also is an emergency. The idea that that area would not need to be developed or anything, as it's a slope that's unstable, not going to be developed where this specific project doesn't need that one to happen.
Look, it's not going to be developed, why can't you just say, well, you'd like you know, a high-capacity crane?
Well, for the, for the construction and safety and the emergency access, we would not recommend that.
But I guess my question would be is that if it's not going to be developed, because I know it's that, I do not, but why would we fall into it if it's not going to be developed? And I know, and I completely understand what you're coming from in terms of, you know, the need for it, but if it's not accessible, it's developed. Why would we need to put an exemption and say, it's not going to be developed, but just in case it's going to be developed, it's going to be. That's, I guess, that's my question. And it acts as, can we develop? Right now, this is the whole part of, the report, or somebody else, who's written right down the middle of it, of, they asked me, we don't know, the, 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 what? For that duty? Oh, yeah, the, the storage unit, or the way.
Right, we just want to make sure that it's full understanding of that tsunami evacuation. There's, there's nothing planned going on, there's no other things coming in. Interrupt that.
Chair?
Yes.
This is Crystal.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that we were having a partially in-person meeting, or I would have come, but I do want to tell you, we're having trouble hearing what's going on at the meeting. And if I'm supposed to write this up into code language following today's meeting, we're probably going to have to repeat a lot of things or, or have the minutes before I do that, because I just can't understand quite what's going on.
Crystal, is it, is it because I, like, have a math problem, or are we just muffled?
It gets, it gets muffled unless somebody's looking straight at their mic, I think.
Okay, so can you hear me well now?
Whoever's speaking, I just heard.
Okay, it's Chris and Crystal. Okay, so I will, we will try to act into our microphones, who we think here. I guess the question, what, 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 where were you at last when you kind of were like, what are you all talking about?
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
What, I didn't understand what you said.
I said, so the, where, did you understand perhaps the ports to thought, so they would like, they, they, they were the 45-foot limit for the 7A? The exemptions they would like within there would be for the, a greater than exemption for 45 feet for their high-capacity crane, and then nothing higher than 35 feet above Dock Road.
I understand that. I think we're going to have to be real specific when we make the motions as to what the Planning Commission wants. I don't really understand above Dock Road or where that is ending.
Yeah, that's kind of what, that was the questioning I was having to Tom and Mila was, why would there need to be an exemption if perhaps it couldn't, you know, if it wasn't going to be developed? And Patty mentioned that the city owns some lots up there, the port owns some lots, and then there's a little slop of a lot that somebody privately owns, and that it could be developed, possibly, but the development has to relate to the port action. And so that's kind of where I was going for, is if, if it's not going to be developed, why would we need an exemption? So Patty answered my question now.
So I, I, I think that needs to be discussed a little bit, because we just need to understand, everybody needs to understand what they're voting on. But we haven't really gotten into the discussion yet, so.
We have, no, I was just asking questions of presenters.
Commissioner, so, maybe like this, Larry, we're talking about 35 feet, we're drawing a line down, Reagan Street, which is on this map, Reagan Street, and it is actually a lot of, it's not. Are we talking about the area to the right? To the east of, the eastern of? Okay.
Yeah, I'll dump in.
North, it's, you mean, the, 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 the Dock Road?
Yeah, I'll, I'll dump in, Aaron Ashdown, Port Commission. So I mean, most of that area is not owned by the port. North of Dock Road, from Union Street. So, I mean, the, the, the only 7MA area that, um, you look at the lot maps, I think our only portion at the port home is currently on the, the bend. There's, there's an interesting little lot there. And I'll whip it up and divide. I think the, the one closest to the creek, uh, the deep, there are the, uh, oh, nice lot of deep, and then there's two slippers, and those are private property for good owners.
I think this is the same issue that was brought up at the beginning, that there's maybe an area that you want to cut it off and make it a lower height, as opposed to an exemption to make it a higher height? I think there's some confusion. It looks like. Staff report suggests that the, that you could use the street there possibly as a dividing line, but you can't just do it by tax lots.
They're having some technical difficulty with the cameras in the City Hall. So Crystal, I'm just wondering, when we get tuned back in, if maybe you could give an example?
Well, I think we need to go through the packet. I mean, we need to hear what the port has to say and understand it, and then we need to go through the packet again, and then you guys need to do your decision-making. You, you probably need to speed it up as much as you can. Because I, I'm afraid we're going to just be going on and on. And if you look at the sheet that has the timelines on it, you're going to have three months after you make a decision of what you like best.
Well, I'll just speak to your clarification, Crystal, that what I'm hearing you say is that there's a difference between the port requesting an exemption to the height limit and coming up with an alternative approach to the, the whole above Dock Road issue.
Well, I don't know if it's above Dock Road. I think there's a different road, because Dock Road starts at the top and goes to the bottom. Is it Oregon Street or something? It's not Oregon.
No.
It's, but it's up, there's two lots right above it that are currently in the, in the MA zone.
Right. And I think what I was sort of pointing to is that you were clarifying that there's a difference between asking for an exemption and requesting a change in the height limit in that area, right?
Yes.
We got to work on our.
I thought I heard exemption, and I thought, well, I don't think that's what they want.
Okay, so that, I appreciate that. I think that's exactly what you're talking about, is making sure that we're using the right terminology.
Right.
And I appreciate that. So I would just say that we're not actually asking for an exemption based on what you just said, but we are expressing concerns about a 45-foot height limit above a tsunami evacuation zone. That's the concern we're expressing. And that applies regardless of who the owner of the property is. It applies to the situation that we're trying to resolve as part of this redevelopment project, which is that there's a safe evacuation route from the port to the top of the hill using the existing Dock Road. It'll be modified and hardened, we hope, through this redevelopment project, but it sure would be unwise, I would say, to build a 45-foot-tall building right above a tsunami evacuation route. I think that's the point we're trying to make.
Crystal, this is Commissioner Burne. So the only way, if I understand this correctly, and Sheila, you can answer this too, to make two different heights occur in the same zone is by using exemptions. Is that correct?
Well, it wouldn't be an exemption, it would be just a different height for, if you can easily define the area of the road. If you can't define it, you can't zone, you can't give it a special case.
Okay.
I said, you can't define it by, you can't define, I mean, it's not useful to define it by tax lots, because they change.
Right, but you can use streets.
I think you could use a street, as long as you know where that street is.
Yes, okay.
Or even, as long as the people that might develop could define where the street is with their surveyor, right?
Well, we're using maps.
Well, yeah, but you wouldn't be able to use maps when you were developing, because the maps might, are not survey maps. Does that make sense?
I'm thinking that it might have been better if we all showed up at City Hall.
Well, we were, I didn't know that it was an option, I'm sorry.
I didn't either, and, and Ms. Sees just pointed out, wondering if we have two meetings going on, and I too am sitting here wondering what, what meeting is being recorded. Maybe we should all bounce off this and call back in? I, I don't know, I haven't, nobody has called my office to let me know what's going on. I don't know, anybody's called Crystal.
Yeah. Oh, there's Patty, she's back. So if the, if the video is the problem, we can probably still conduct the meeting with just voice, correct?
Let me, let me call City Hall and see if, like, wait, something's happening.
Right.
North of Dock Road and east of Oregon Street, which is both viewed, Crystal's back.
So north of, north of Dock Road and east of Oregon Street?
Yeah, east of.
Are, are where the issues are?
Well, it's the area that is, is a little, in terms of the lot for completing the city open on Port, on Port.
So is the port's interest that for the sake of this road?
It just didn't work, 7MA just literally died right at the beginning. We have lots of over 35.
We suggested that the going of the bigger cities.
That's not how this.
No, 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 no. So the, so the, so the 7MA stays at 45. The exemptions are with the, you know, the, the areas of.
Guys, you have, you have like two different meetings going on at this point in time. The people out here in technology land can't follow your meeting that you're having there, and I'm concerned about what meeting is being recorded.
Hold on, Sheila, we had an issue with the computer. It died right in the middle.
Sure.
I'm going to ask everybody to stop while we figure this out, so they can get going. How do we get it so we can see everybody? I have no idea. Crystal, I said, I don't. Okay, let's do everyone. There you go. Yeah, this isn't my thing, I have something else that we can get.
We could, we can see you now.
Okay, so what happened, just so everybody is aware, the computer literally just quit working in the middle. Like you, it died. So that's why, could you, was there a moment in which you couldn't see us at all?
Yes.
Yeah. The computer died. So while we were trying to figure out how to get the computer back up, they were still conversing, we were looking at city versus port lots, hoping that we'd get Crystal back up soon. But what I think we need to do now is, we've had the presentation, so I'd like to move on, thank you all very much. I'd like to, go ahead. Christian Delance is going to ask one brief question, and then we're going to move on to the planning matters of B, now that we have everybody back on, after Christian Delance's question.
All right, Aaron, is there any area above Dock Road, north of Dock, north of Dock Road that you feel the port needs to build anything over 30, over 40, over 35 feet on?
So north of Dock Road is, depending on where you're standing on Dock Road, is, is pretty different. So, so the, the flattest area north of Dock Road is that Oregon Street east, like, like that road was to go through. So that's, as far as flatland, that's, that's the only area, but technically, we don't own all of that, the city does also. So west of Oregon Street, that's where we're going to be conducting a slope stability study, you know? This could be pre-disaster mitigation, you know, we, we don't know yet what, what we're going to discover in that area. So we're currently, we put out an RFP, we've got contractors that have sent us proposals. Mainly, the idea is to prevent that slope from sliding across the road and preventing access to the port. So the, as far as our development project, our redevelopment project, that's, that's the only goal with the north side of Dock Road, is to keep it from sliding across the road.
So to cut a little closer to the.
Hold on, hold on, let me see if I can get this going again. Okay, can you guys see us? Okay, okay, try again.
So if the city were to, if the city were to rezone or to change the, the building heights north of Dock Road? or to change the, the building heights north of Dock Road, drop it from 45 to 35, would that infringe on it with the plans of the port?
Until the geological study comes back, you know, we don't even know in, in that area. So, I mean, that's, that's why we kind of focused on that Oregon Street East because that's the only area where you can even think about building on, so.
Question, why can't we just make the whole zone of 35? Why do we?
The whole seven MA?
Yeah, with the exception for the high pass of the train. What's, why, why would we be able, why would you recommend that?
Well, I mean, I, I guess the, the port in the beginning of this whole process, I think the only thing we had agreed on was just, you know, that part was fine. But until we got into the meat of it, you know, it's like all these little lots, our redevelopment project, the slope, you know, all these questions started coming to the surface. So I don't think we made an official statement other than what the port manager wrote, which was quite a few months ago. That was the only official statement.
Okay, well, thank you guys very much. We appreciate it. Okay, now we're gonna move on to B, review of building heights and exemptions in 4C and 5I zones. Crystal, can you hear, can you hear me, Crystal?
Yeah, would you want me to go ahead and lead us into this?
Please.
Okay, so on the top of your packet, underneath the Agenda Minutes, you have the timelines document. And at this point, we have spent many months now talking about height restrictions or height opportunities, however you want to look at it. And I believe that it is time for a decision to be made. And so in order to make a decision, you need to see these items in a staff report with some code language attached. And I kind of need to know what you want to accomplish here before we can come up with that code language. So I think this is a good meeting to try to push it through as to what people want. Because when you look at the bottom of this email that I sent to Krista and Patty, we have quite a few things to do before we're done with this. And I know that people are getting edgy about it. They want us to get done with it for various reasons. And it is time to get done. So you have to have a write-up that you can make decisions on soon. I mean, first you have to make a decision of what you want in that write-up. And it's still, everything's floating around. And then I try to get it down and get it right with Patty's help and Shayla's help so that we can get it in front of you as a document so that you can decide whether you're ready to make motions. As you can see from the bottom of this, that before we even have our first hearing, we have a number of things to do. And, you know, actually, next month would be the time that you could see the documents so that you could make your decision that will go to the public hearing. Then, of course, the public hearing has opportunities for people to have more input. And you may want to change that, and that's expected. So all this process is gonna take three months once you have a general idea of what you want to present. So we should move forward as soon as we can and try to get something done at this meeting. The second item in here is the memo from last month's meeting. It's the same staff report. There's nine items included along with this little memo, the full staff report that was presented at first. And then the second is the ordinance. And for now, the ordinance is how things are gonna fit into your code. You will see in the ordinance that there's a lot of exemptions that are addressed by Mr. Thielin in his memo to the council. That's the last item in this packet. And you haven't even begun to discuss those. And also, there's probably some things that your staff needs to look up and see because there's certain things that you can't do exemptions on. The only thing I would caution you is that you don't make this too difficult for the city of Port Orford. I, I saw Greg, I appreciate your memo. And I, but I saw that it has a lot of things to be inserted and things like that. And that does make it a little harder for a city that isn't fully staffed to oversee things. So I just wanted to caution about that. If it's something you really want, you should do it. But I don't think you should do it just because Banden has it or somebody has it because sometimes they don't have their code the way they want it either. So you really need to look at what you suggest for exemptions and whether they really are gonna make a difference to Port Orford. Otherwise, you shouldn't be changing things. So that's my staff report. I did also want to mention that the exemption in the tsunami zone is not something that you have to make a motion on. It's already in the code. And that was the intent of the observation tower, too. It was not an observation tower proposed by the port. The, that wasn't the reason we put the observation tower in there. The reason we put observation tower in as a, as an exemption in the code that the council adopted was because the tsunami group talked about an observation tower quite often as a possibility of something that the city would like to have. Therefore, when we put it into the language, we call it public observation tower. If you think there's a better word for that than public, you know, but that would say that an individual does not own a public observation tower. A public observation tower is for something that is to the benefit of the public. But there may be better words. But I just wanted to point those things out. And I think that we should proceed today.
Crystal, can I ask you a question? When we talk about the public observation tower, that's specifically what you're referring to? Because I'm trying to read through multiple.
That is shown in the, it's called Item 2, the ordinance that the council adopted in February. We put the word "observation tower" in there with a definition. It's on the first page of Item 2. It says, "Observation tower means a public structure used to view events from a long distance and to create a 360-degree range of vision." Then we have that public observation tower listed in, on the second page of Item 2, which is 1720.050, general exception to building height limitations. So the purpose of that was not for something the port is planning on or not planning on. The purpose of that was to respond to tsunami discussions that went on with the tsunami committee when the code was organized for tsunamis.
Can I ask you another question, Crystal, as a clarification? During public comment, Ms. Thompson mentioned that there was a possible 100-foot observation tower going to be built, I believe, in the 4C. Am I correct on that?
If that's by a private individual, that would not fit.
Okay. I wanted to make sure. Because according to her, that individual said, either the loophole I can build. So that's why I wanted to ask specifically about.
Well, if you think public, the word "public" is a loophole, then we should tighten it up. But the purpose of calling it a public observation tower was to comply with tsunami ideas and to keep individual, every individual from saying that they're gonna do an observation tower.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because I wanted to make sure that we all.
I'm not saying it's perfect. I don't know if it's perfect. I'm just, I think that was the intent, though.
Okay. Because I, I think, I mean, if that private individual were to build that tower and say, but it's open to the public. I'm gonna charge $5 so you can walk up the stairs and look. I mean, do we want to make sure that we say "public" would be some sort of like, this is for government, governmental entities only? I mean, I don't know. I don't know how to make that word.
I don't either. That's why we need to get to work on this. I mean, there might be another definition needed for what constitutes public or a better definition of public observation tower.
Okay. I just thought I'd ask that question.
Good question.
So, Crystal, then, I think in looking at what we need to look at is we need to perhaps discuss, you know, in, in the, in the conversation at the workshop with the city council, they really, they wanted us to look specifically at the 4C and 5I zones and then look at the exemptions. And I know at the last meeting, there was perhaps some conversations about sending pieces to the council. I, I think that we need to make sure that we're sending the entire thing at one time to the council. So my question to you, Crystal, would be, and Commissioners, please jump in at any time. I think that in general, based on the past couple of meetings, that we're all in agreement that the 4C and 5I, we've all kind of figured out that's what we, where we're at on that. Am I correct? So Crystal, Patty, Shayla, could we make those motions to get those going and then work on the exemptions? Or how does that work?
Yeah, I think that, I think that that would be how I would proceed is to make the motions on the things that you know you agree on. And then there actually are, there was one set of exemptions that the council addressed. And they really didn't talk about the exceptions, which is a different thing. They, they added those exceptions for the stationary boat hoist, which sounds like maybe it should be renamed. And I took that down what the port was saying. And they added the exemption for the public observation tower, which we could reword or better define if you want.
Okay.
If, if those other things are things that you feel need to be removed or changed in some way, be very specific. Because, you know, there's a, there's a few of them that are required under various laws, transmission towers and things like that. We can't take those out.
Okay, so what I'm thinking is, is let's address right now the 4C and 5I zones. And then can we move to the exception? So do I have, do we have any conversation, I believe, and Commissioners jump in, that we all agree that 35 feet maximum height in the 4C and 5I zone is what we would recommend? Am I correct on that? Okay, so let's address specifically the 4C zone. Do I have a motion to recommend any sort of a height limitation in the 4C zone?
Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
I move, I move that in the 4C zone, allowable building heights be changed to a maximum of 35 feet.
So I have a first, our first motion. Our motion on the floor is currently for the 4C zone that we have a maximum building height limitation of 35 feet. Do I have a second? Commissioner Reinhold, a second? Do I have any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Reinhold?
Yes.
Commissioner Thielin?
Yes.
Commissioner Jesuit?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schofield? Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
Commissioner Nyard is a yes? That motion has passed. Okay, now we're moving on to the 5I. Am I correct on that? 5I, correct? Okay, so do I have a motion for any sort of building height change in the industrial zone 5I?
Commissioner Burnt? I move that in the 5I zone, allowable building heights be changed to a maximum of 35 feet.
Commissioner Burnt has made a motion for that in the 5I zone. Allowable building height be changed to a maximum of 35 feet. Is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Reinhold, a second? We have a second? Do we have any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Reinhold?
Yes.
Commissioner Thielin?
Yes.
Commissioner Jesuit? Commissioner Schofield? Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
Commissioner Nyard is a yes? The motion has passed. Okay, so we've done the 4C and 5I. So I think the next thing, Crystal, that we need to address would be the general, the exception to the building heights. Am I correct on that? Or should we maybe look at the seven MA?
I think you should look at the, it's not the exception to building heights. It's the conditional use. I'm looking for what the number is. It's what, the council discussed it. Exemption, exemptions, not the exceptions. So it's under C on the first page of the staff report, Item 1.
Okay, hold on, hold on. We're all gonna try to jump to it real quick.
Item 1, the first page of the staff report, has a big Item 1 in green on it. If you're, I don't know if yours is in green. And it's Item C on the first page. And so we, this would be additional standards concerning conditional, governing conditional uses. And you did have quite a discussion about that, and so did the council. And I believe that the objection that people expressed was that they didn't want people to be able to amalgamate properties and make them larger and then build taller and taller buildings within those. And at the council meeting, there was quite a discussion about that. And then they dropped it. But I think you guys have discussed it also.
Crystal, can I ask you a quick question? And I'm looking at your Item 1 specifically. Where is that spoken about in the?
So that is.
Now we're having that conversation about if you have two lots, you possibly could have a higher based on your square footage. Or, am I correct on that?
On Page 2 at the bottom of that, on the Page 2 at the bottom, very bottom is 17.32.050.
Okay, so additional standards governing conditional uses. So, and so if I look at, if I go to Page 3, top of Page 3, it says, "Church, hospital, nursing home, convalescent home, or retirement home may be built to exceed the height limitations of the zoning which it's located to a maximum height as determined by the state fire marshal. Floors, total floor area of the building does not exceed 1 and 1/2 times the area of the site. And its yard, I think it says, its yard dimensions in each case are equal 2 or at least 2/3 of the height of the principal structure." Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, I believe that people have pretty, been pretty consistent through the council and the planning commission that this entire section could be removed.
Commissioner Thielin?
Yes. I did, there's, Item Number 6 in the, in these documents that we have, which I submitted at the last meeting, is a comparison of neighboring town codes with regard to this 1732.050. And there is no other town that has this. In fact, I was not able to find it anywhere. So I don't know where it came from. But if it's going to open the possibility that an extremely large building could be, extremely large lot or piece of property, I think we should not have it in our code.
Should we motion to remove it entirely? It's up to you. Is there any more, is there any more discussion, Commissioners? I mean, ultimately, I think what it was saying is, is if you have one lot, your max would be 35. But if you have two lots, based on what your lots are, you could go up to a maximum of 50 if it, if it so, has the ability to do so. And there'd be nothing that you could do about it based on this particular, particular piece of code. Any more discussion?
Commissioner Rossi, you gotta make a motion that Section 17.32.050, additional standards governing conditional uses, be deleted from the zoning code.
So I have a motion that's 17.32.050, additional standards governing conditional uses be removed from the code. Do I have a second? Commissioner Reinhold, a second? I have a second. I have a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Reinhold?
Yes.
Commissioner Phelan?
Yes.
Commissioner Jesuit? Commissioner Schofield? Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
Commissioner Nierd is a yes, the motion is carried. Okay, Crystal, so there's three. Where should we go next?
Okay, the next would be to look right above that on page two of item two. All right, I'm sorry, item one, which was the original staff report. And see if and where you want to change exceptions to building height limitations. You have discussed that a couple of times already this evening or this afternoon. And one would be that you would want to possibly change the definition of stationary boat hoist to what Mr. Calvinery suggested. And I have that down. Maybe some of you do too. I can find it if you need it for a motion. And then the section, second thing was that you talked about wanting a better definition of... Oh, that's what's in there now. So that would be a better definition of public observation tower that would assure that they couldn't just make it public if they're an individual. So we would probably need to describe, make a motion, you know, describe public a little better or something. I could look at some examples.
Yeah, Crystal, can I ask you a couple of questions? Because in my reading of the general exception, there are a few things that I'm not really quite sure. So when it says the word tank, are we talking about like a water tower or water tank?
So why don't you look at item two, where it has that at the bottom, and you can see the, what was brought before the city council and what they did.
Okay.
It's in the ordinance, ordinance number 202102, and it's item two at the bottom. And so that is, first, the definitions are there for observation tower, and then on page two, we have the general exceptions. 17.20.050.
Okay, so I can see that the council has, since the observation tower, they talked about public. So my question, like, for example, we talk about chimney, I don't know what a tank is. I'm not sure, you know, what's the, what is it, what are we accepting for the tank? Would it be a water tower? I know what a church fire, belfry dome, monument. Which one of these in this general exception, which any of these, which do we have to have by law? How about that? What by law has to be in the exception?
Well, we don't know yet for sure. I think possibly transmission tower, but I don't know. Because that's, that's what we've been allowing our utility. Our... Right, the cell towers that are, that are allowed by law.
Radio and television towers?
Yeah, I think that's maybe what we're doing it under.
Okay, how about like, do we have to have an elevator shaft? Because I'm thinking if our buildings are higher than 35 feet or whatever, the elevator shafts may not go that high.
So that's a good discussion to have.
Okay, and then, like I said, I don't really know what it is. Are we talking about a water tower?
If we don't ever need a water tower in Port Orford, I suppose you might have a subdivision that would want one at some point if it could keep them from having to build a pump station. I don't know. I don't know if that would be, I just don't know where that goes.
Okay.
Along with your hesitancy, and you know, I'd expect that, right? Because we're all going, well, what if, what if? Why are we, I would be in favor of eliminating as much as possible. And, you know, maybe allowing, taking out the word stationary boat hoist, it is hard to say.
It is ridiculous.
And just put boat hoist in there.
Or they call it a high-capacity crane, I think is what they were talking about.
And because they were saying it might be horrible if we want to allow that. We just take everything out. And then is it possible in those rare exceptions that they would have to come and ask for variance?
That's not what variance is.
It was, yeah.
Okay, so right now, we already have water tanks here in town. So I don't know how tall they are, but that's what supplies the town with their water. So we don't want to get rid of it, not allow it. Because we won't have any water.
But I'm also thinking, like, do we really need to have an elevator shaft as an exception? Especially if our buildings don't go higher than 35 feet? That, I mean, that would be my kind of question.
Only if you had it on some public observation tower or something, and then, I don't know, you know. It, I don't know if that's important or not. We haven't ever talked about this before.
So, Carrie, are you saying these could be, say someone wanted, a church wanted to build a very high tower, would they be able to come to the city council or maybe to the crystal?
Can you change the wording and request the height?
I don't think you should build in a bunch of variances.
Okay.
Or things, if you're gonna have an exception, you should have an exception. But not, I mean, it kind of defeats the purpose.
I've looked around at the, I did some research on this, and unfortunately, I overlooked the boat hoist. Well, when I was seeking to eliminate some of these, I feel kind of bad about that. Obviously, that's a high priority for me. But, and I thought about the belfries and the steeples and, you know, in this, in our, where we live, that's not a tradition. You go back to Boston, they have those huge belfries and crosses. That's not what we, I don't see that around, I don't see that in any of the towns around here. I've looked at all the churches, they're all like 25 or 30 feet. They're not, they're not even, it's not, it hasn't, it isn't an issue. Is what I, what I have noticed. So I'm, I'm with Commissioner Jesuit, things that we don't really need, let's take them out. What if some, what if some megachurch decided to come in and build 100-foot, you know, tower, you know, and that's fine if they want to do it, but is that what we really want in this city?
And I can add to that, two things we don't need, and this is where I can sit, and for things we don't even understand what they are. Are we going to, the elevator tower, elevator shaft? We don't know what it is, what we're gonna allow it.
Why do you need a flag for that?
If you have a wind.
I was trying to think, oh, it's all the flag.
I mean, I just, I can't imagine in any circumstance we would want that kind of a smokestack.
Commissioner Burnt here, I have a question.
Yes.
Is, is there any reason why we can't just do away with these exemptions? Since it just seems to me that it creates a lot of question and doubt. And wouldn't it streamline all of it if, if it wasn't there?
Crystal? I guess, and I mean, I don't know if you need fire and hose towers or anything like that, or tanks, or, I don't know. We haven't really looked into it. I mean, I haven't looked into it, and I haven't heard a lot of discussion until tonight.
When, when we brought this up at the last meeting, I'm not sure if it was you that mentioned that, that I noticed that when I was looking at the, at the codes in the, in the cities all along the coast, that the wording is exactly the same. So it looks like some boilerplate that was adopted somewhere. It wasn't something that came from the community itself.
My suggestion was that the county did the zoning for the cities in Curry County, and they may have found something and suggested it in a model code or something.
I mean, I might, I think you have to have exceptions, for example, for the boat hoist. You have to have that in there, because if you don't, I think it may not go well. Same thing with the public observation tower, but I would agree with Commissioners Phelan. I mean, you have the church fire. Yeah, you have a belfry. I probably will probably never see a belfry. The only place I've ever seen a smokestack in a town is Anaconda, Montana. I haven't seen them anywhere else. And so I'm more of a less is better. So, I, I don't know, commissioners, do we want to go through this list and say we don't need it? Keep that in? Do we want to just let it be and, you know, in 40 years from now, maybe somebody comes in with a belfry?
I, I think we should stick with the ones that we want. We could say public water towers? Public or water, water towers or municipal water towers? Something like that, would that be?
I like, I like municipal water towers, because, Crystal, would you agree that municipal then really talks, and Shayla perhaps you too, that municipal talks then to, that they're used by the city?
And would the observation tower roll off with that? Could it be a municipal observation tower?
I, I don't know about municipal, because to me, the most likely ones to build a water tower might be a subdivision that's up in some of your higher areas of town. They, it would be called a community water system.
Could we then maybe say a community water system?
You could say that.
Okay. I mean, because to me, I would keep the church-
You could say municipal or community water system, approved, you know, or approved community water system or something like that. Be, you approve community water system or something like that.
Okay, because I, I would say, in my opinion, I would take out belfry dome. I would probably take out a monument.
Yes.
I mean, we don't want the Washington monuments to be built here. Fire and hose towers? Commissioner Reinhold, so I did speak with the co-chief of the Sixes Fire Department, and she is, has actually been working on writing a grant to build one of these for them, and it's just essentially a four or five foot training tower. It's just for the purposes, I don't think it would be in town. She's not even thinking it's something that'll ever come to fruition, but it would be really useful in training for our area. So she was hoping we would keep that in. Okay, now, I actually, now that you say that, I kind of have an idea of what we could be. I think we keep the public observation tower mast in, but perhaps we can define the word public or use, find a word that perhaps describes it a little bit better. I'm not sure what an aerial cooling tower is.
I don't think we need one of those. That's for, I think they're part of my-
Okay, well, I think let's take that out. Elevator shafts?
I don't think we need an elevator shaft.
I would say probably keeping the transmission towers.
Yeah, maybe, do we say FCC mandated transmission towers or something that, so that's?
I don't know, Crystal, what do you think?
I don't know who approves all of those, honestly. I mean, I know some of them are FCC, but then there's other kinds of utility poles that probably aren't FCC. I don't know.
So I probably just leave it then as transmission towers.
Commissioner Burns? I suggest that we strike the public observation tower. If people really want to observe things, they can go up on top of a hill. We have plenty of those. They can go out to Cape Blanco and climb the light tower. I think it just leaves room for an individual that we heard testimony from Leela Thompson, who says that they want to do this. I mean, the whole point of an observation tower is just to be able to look over the whole city.
No, that wasn't, that wasn't why it's in there. The reason that I, that I put it in there was because I heard all the discussions of the tsunami thing about how they're going to, how there might be funding for a place, a community gathering place where they could see around the town as to what is happening.
So would you, like a local evacuation structure, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, well, and, and an observation, I mean, yeah. Evacuation, observation structure.
So maybe instead of saying public observation tower mast, could we call it the tsunami vertical evacuation structure?
That's in a, that's in conditional use in a, in a separate place.
Yeah, I have no idea. I have some in favor right now.
Yeah.
It's under, well, it's in the ordinance, under definitions, item nine.
I agree, I agree with Commissioner Burnt, that the public observation tower could be taken, tower mast. It, 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 it it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I think in this day and age too, we have drone technology
Yeah.
to replace them.
And satellite.
And satellite. Well, so my, my question though, Crystal, again, is if you look at ordinance 201902, and it's under 17.4, so this is page item nine. We're on page three. Under 17.46.080 evacuation route improvement requirements. Under item D, it says to tsunami evacuation structures. Tsunami evacuation structures are not subject to the building height limitations of this code. So does it have to be under the general exemption that it already says they're not?
Well, I mean, if they're not, well, then it should be, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I guess it doesn't have to be, but it, it is.
Well, but if you look here, it says they're not.
Right.
So I, my question is, if it already says pretty much that you can build one, a tsunami evacuation structure, and it's not, my question then becomes is, so any of that person could say, "Oh, I'm building a tsunami evacuation structure," versus saying, "We have a public observation..."
Public tsunami evacuation structure.
Yeah, so that's my question.
Or, and I looked at this, I'm not aware, I was on the internet about, about the word public, and I looked about various things. And in the state of New Hampshire, they have governmental use as category, because it, well, there, governmental use is not subject to the code, other codes, basically, too. But to say publicly, can we say, so, let me ask this. Can we say publicly funded? Or municipally funded? As a distinction between private and public?
I think, I think I need to look for some better words. Funded, it could be funded by almost anything.
So, so, Crystal, if the city were to build something, wouldn't the city build it in a public facility zone?
Well, anything except a tsunami evacuation struc, excuse me, evacuation structure, because those are going in to, in different coastal cities. You know, on the top of buildings, they're, they're building buildings to accommodate their people. I don't know too much about it. I just have seen articles.
Because I was just thinking that if, if our concern is individuals building a, a public tower that they're essentially going to charge money to get on and call it so-called public, what if the exception was only for public observation towers in public facility zones? That would limit where they could be put.
But they might, that might not be where you want a tsunami structure. You would have to look at the tsunami.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking tsunami. I was just thinking this observation tower. Because I think that there's a difference between an evacuation structure and an observation tower.
Yeah, definitely. One, one might be useful.
Right.
If it was public, if it was a public, if the city decided to build an evacuation tower, then the city should be able to do it. But Joe Blow shouldn't be able to go build something and call it an evacuation tower. Maybe he's had a tea up there a bit. I don't know.
I don't think though that the city should have all kinds of rights that other people don't have to not follow the law, unless it's in a public facility zone, as Shayla said. Because otherwise, the city can do anything and they don't have to abide by their own code.
So that was a question I was researching and finding some answers to. So with Oregon statutes and Oregon case law, have, has that been challenged?
I don't know.
Because in New Hampshire, there's a whole, there's a big write-up about that. And that, that it was found that the, uh, government, the government, the local government superseded the zoning laws.
Well, I know that a lot of cities hire me and counties when they want to do some of their own stuff because they don't want the public to perceive that they are fixing the staff reports and everything to fit the city. So it's not unusual for cities to try to fit into the code as opposed to being exempt from the code.
Understandable.
Shayla, can I ask you a quick question? This is.
Sure.
What is considered a public use zone? Like what zones would we consider that be? I think that's the phrase.
They're, they're, I think they're public called public facilities zone in Port Orford. And it's like where your, your wastewater treatment plants are. There's, could be some others scattered around, but that's the one that comes to mind. And it would allow essentially those pieces of property to be used for the cities for, I mean, for a public purpose, for public facilities, meaning, you know, infrastructure, towers, in my opinion, could go there. Something that's for a public purpose.
Would it be? Okay, okay, thank you. Because when you said public facilities zone, I wasn't really quite sure where we were discussing.
Well, I can't tell on our map because the APF and the 5I are very similar in color. But, um.
Okay.
Is, is your wastewater plant on Eleventh Street?
I think it's 12th.
Twelve in Arizona, it kind of goes up Arizona by Hamlet.
So that probably is a public facility zone. And then you have, um.
Driftwood has, the Driftwood, um, school campus is, I believe, a public facility zone.
Um, Driftwood School Campus would be on Highway 101, right?
Yeah.
You guys have the map in your.
Yeah.
You guys have it on, um, I think it's item seven? It's, it's at the end of the staff report, which is item one. Attachment A.
It's, it's the blue, on the attachment A, it's the kind of the blue, it's the blue areas. So, yeah, yeah. The visitor center, I believe, is in APF. Driftwood would be considered one. This is where the wastewater plant.
Is Driftwood on there as a public facility?
Yes.
I got the middle of the block.
Uh, 811th Street up to Kitchener on 101.
Fellas, guys, it's there. So we're talking about two things, the, the public observation tower and tsunami. I recommend, like Commissioner Burns, that we do away with the public observation tower mast, which is kind of confusing. And if it's, if the purpose is to view the city, that's what drones are for. As Commissioner Judge would say. It, it looks like for me, i- i- if we were to do that and then were to be able to define what a public use was in the tsunami evacuation structure piece of it, that would deal with this issue. That's one way to, that's one way to deal with it. Uh, I, I put in the, in this, in this memo, I put, I, I put governmental use, which is maybe not the best, uh, but legal minds could come up with a better one, I'm sure. Just to define what a public, you know, if it can't be publicly funded, publicly authorized. I, I don't, I'm at a loss for words, but I know what I wanted to say, but I don't know how to say it.
I'm happy to look up some definitions and come back to you with something next month if you would like.
I think that would, yeah, I think that would be great. I mean, the concern is, if, I guess my concern is, is I don't want to take out the public observation tower mast if it will be used as a tsunami evacuation structure. Um, so I think it'd be good to have a little bit of some of that perhaps. But I would like to, I mean, in, in my conference, in my thoughts, I would like to get this, this process moving. So Crystal, if you bring back definitions, will this slow up the process of us getting this process coming to the council?
I'll either come back with a few or I'll come back with one, and then if you don't like it, you can change it.
Okay, so do, are we in agreement perhaps?
So this would be for public, for the word public, instead of that word?
Yeah.
So are we talking about inserting the word public into the, uh, uh, tsunami evacuation structures, uh, piece of it? Oh, under general exceptions. All right.
All right, um, how, we said no air to area, aerial cooling tower because we don't think we'll ever have a nuclear plant here. Okay, we said no to the elevator shaft. We are going to keep the transmission tower. Um, how about smokestack? Nobody say take it out? Flagpoles?
Take it out.
Um, radio or television towers, I might leave those in because you never know. And I think it, yeah, I think it's logged. Okay, and then other similar projections, I think. Uh, radio or television towers and other similar projections. I think that then gives us a little bit more of a way to engage with something.
I, I would like to have, uh, so have we taken out chimney? Are we taking out chimney?
I would not like to see that taken out.
I would like to see chimneys maybe extend, uh, five feet over the, over the building height. Chimneys not taller than five feet. Which is what they need.
In their, in their general exception?
In their general, and it's simple. It's, it's their only one.
Okay, I would be okay with that. Anybody else? Does anybody disagree with that?
Good.
So chimneys may extend five feet above.
I would just put chimneys not taller than five feet.
There you go. Chimneys not taller than five feet.
Now, Crystal, did we say for the stationary boat hoist, what phrase?
I think, I think he talked about it as, um, putting in high capacity boat hoist or crane.
Okay, I just want to make sure. That's what I, I thought too. Commissioner Reynolds?
I was just going to say, is it not enough to just remove the word stationary? See, I thought they said that too, because they never, but the thing was like, well, all of those are also boat hoists. So it kind of was even more encapsulated.
Okay, yeah, because then they were like, but then all of a sudden at the end, one of them said, well, we can just call the high capacity. Be a boat. Okay, so I would say instead of putting high capacity crane, just take out the word stationary.
I agree.
Okay.
So you don't want the high capacity words?
No, I think just do boat, boat hoist, because I think he said they call it either or.
You probably want that one to say, um, port also, or that word for public, otherwise.
Yeah, boat hoist in the port facility. Yeah, that's, I would, I would just take out the word station. Do we, what about church? Okay. Take all three church, fire, belfry.
I feel like we can take, take tank out.
And call it maybe a water tank. We could also maybe, but we could maybe call it a community water system. I think Crystal mentioned that as well. Commercial, community or public water. Because like she said, if there was a, um, a subdivision that goes in and have a water tank that's.
I mean, I don't know. I just, I was just throwing that out that it might.
It sounds amazing when you throw it out though.
And then it can divide these days and other similar projections.
It's kind of like the, and other job, you know.
Just in place.
Descriptions. Shayla, my question then is should we, can we take it out or do we have that maybe to cover us? Is that kind of like the other job duties as defined?
Job duties as given? Um, it, it is the catch-all phrase. It's, it's up to you whether or not you want it in there.
Okay.
It is, it is some loophole language, although I don't know what else could be a other similar projection when it's coupled with a radio or television tower. I mean, I, I don't know.
Well, where do you put your cell towers then?
Transmission towers or, or cell towers, transmission towers?
I don't know. I guess.
Could we say transmission or communication towers? And would communications encompass radio and television towers?
Yes.
It would also encompass ham radio.
And it also encompass ham radio.
My, my question, I got, so we are by law, other laws besides the city, for the, we have to include these things? So maybe we don't even need to mention it?
True, if they're allowed by law, you wouldn't have to have any.
So which ones, but which my question then becomes is which ones are allowed by law?
Well, or could the code just read?
Or others?
Other as required by law.
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
And other projections as required. So maybe, so we'd keep the transmission tower. Take out smokestack, flagpole, and instead of radio or television, do communication towers and other projections as required by law? I mean, would that be okay?
I would say, or I would set out Oregon or federal law.
Say that again.
I said, I would set out as required by Oregon or federal law.
Okay, okay.
And federal, required by law.
Or.
Or.
And.
Or. Or federal.
So Crystal and Shayla, do we need to have a motion to get this going since we did some work on that or we're good?
If somebody could read what it should say, what it is you've, you've struck, that would be great.
Okay, go, you ready? Okay, here we go. The following types of structure, structural parts are not subject to the building height limitations of this type. Boat, boats, hoist in the port facility. Chimney not taller than five feet. Community water system. Fire and hose towers. Public ob- observation tower mast, but we'll figure out a little bit more definition. Transmission tower. Communication towers and other. It's not the vice, it's other projections as required by Oregon law or federal.
Okay.
It may not be right when I come back because I've got a real messy paper here.
Okay, we'll figure it out. I, I just, I have a problem, and I'll tell you what my problem is. Is by taking out the public observation tower, my problem becomes is, is then we're saying that if the city wants to build a tsunami evacuation structure, they're not allowed. That's different than this. That was different. This is for looking at, at the tsunami, see if it's coming, and the other one is a place where. Well, theoretically though, the conversation prior was not. I believe, Crystal, you were saying in a council meeting that we talked about public observation tower mast. That would score the tsunami evacuation zone, correct? But that, so that's why the council put it in.
Well, I mean, that might have been why I presented it. I don't know that they talked about it that much. I just, I was trying to, um, encompass what I thought they talked about at the tsunami thing. So, you know, I, that was just my perception. So I wouldn't put too much faith in it in this particular time.
So then here's my question. My question then says in ordinance 2019 dash two, on page 17.46.080, under evacuation route improvement requirements. It says tsunami evacuation structures. Tsunami evacuation structures are not subject to the building height code. Is that already written into the code?
Yes.
Then I would be okay taking it out. As long as it's in their code somewhere. And my question is.
So, um, this is Commissioner Burns.
Yeah.
I have a, um, a report that was done last year, um, for the tsunami, that includes tsunami evacuation structure. So, um, I can forward that to Patty and to Crystal, uh, Krista and Crystal, to all of you, if you would like that.
Yeah, go ahead and forward it, Patty.
What would be the purpose, what are we looking for?
Because it will identify the, um, location for a tsunami evacuation structure.
Do you know where that location is at?
It's, I think it's on the map. Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think that's the only possibility though, is it?
I, I think we need to leave it open.
Okay, so if, as long as we're, I'm, I'm okay taking out the public observation tower mast as long as, you know, we're under, we know that there's that tsunami evacuation structure that's not. Now, I think the next thing the city would have to decide is how do you make sure that somebody's just not building a tsunami evacuation. So, okay, I'm okay with that. So let me reread it again. Make sure I, I'm correct. The following type of structure or structural part are not subject to building height limitations of this type. Boat hoist in the port facility. Chimneys not taller than five feet. Community water system. Fire and hose towers. Transmission tower. Communication towers and other projections as required by Oregon law or federal. Would be agreed on that. Okay. So Crystal, my question to you and Shayla, do we need a motion to accept that definition of it?
I'm hearing a violin and I'm not hearing you.
I know, I can't, I don't know what that is. I've been. Um, Shayla, do we have to have a motion to make that change?
No, so long as you have a consensus, can you just? You don't have to take a formal vote or have a formal motion. But is it the consensus of the planning commission to go with the language that the chair just read?
Is it, is it? Yeah?
Yes. Okay, that's fine.
I'm sorry.
We just need to know what to bring back is the purpose of that.
Okay, okay, so the last one, so we moved on, so we have the exceptions. I think the last one we need to, um, discuss, and we have about fifteen minutes left, would be the, um, the seven M, am I correct on that one? Uh, which is what the court, um, recommended. I think their first one for the exemption for the high capacity crane, we've discussed, and we've gotten that out of the way. I guess my question then becomes is, yes, right now there's a forty-five foot limit. I guess my question then becomes is, yes, right now there's a 45-foot limit, but if they want an exemption for anything above dock road to be 35, why can't we just make the whole zone the 35 feet, with the exception of the boat hoist? Don't say that quickly, hold on a minute.
Because they said they wanted, they said they were, the 35 feet was fine for the, for the, for the dock.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Okay, what is it in the code currently? So currently in the code for 7MA, the height is 45 feet. I, I guess my suggestion would just be 35, and then we don't have to worry about that exemption. And then that pretty much, you said it makes the whole town? 4C, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we made it all 30, so make the whole town 35 feet. Yeah, which would be 30, right? Okay, so do I have a motion?
I don't know how to word that. They can have you for the 7MA zone 35 feet.
Next. Commissioner Reinhold, I motion to change the 7MA zone max building height from 45 feet to 35 feet. So we have a motion on the floor for the 7MA zone to the maximum building height to be 35 feet. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Jesuit, so she seconds it? So Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Reinhold?
Yes.
Commissioner Seeland?
Yes.
Commissioner Jesuit?
Yeah.
Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schofield? Commissioner Nierott is a yes, that motion has passed. So, yeah, that makes everything now 35 feet, except for residential. Okay, I think we've hit everything, correct? I can't find my.
It's very difficult to word.
Hold on. Okay, um, so we, we, we're planning that. So announcing the communications. Crystal, do you have any comments?
Thank you.
Are there any commissioners or comments?
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to thank the chair for running a really great meeting and for, yeah, this was a hard meeting. I'd also like to apologize for hitting on the motions. I didn't realize we were supposed to do that. It was a great conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to apologize to the people on the computer. I'm sorry that we went blank for a while, but hopefully we'll figure it out. I'd like to say thank you to all my fellow commissioners. We did some really good work today. We got some stuff done that took us a while to get done, so thank you all very much. Continuing business. Do we have any public considerations? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
Any seconds?
Second.
You're hereby at 5:20. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good job.
Everybody, turn your mics on.
That's ours?
Yep.
Well, this remembers the first two things that are not in the binder, have not been qualified yet.
Although, of course.
So the dull information is still in the binder. Oh, I was going to ask. Uh, she has sent it off to be qualified. So it should happen soon, and then we'll replace it with this page.
Okay, perfect. So good reading, everybody. Make sure you read the front to back highlights. Just kidding, just kidding. Thank you all very much for the event today.
Thank you. Miss you.
I literally can't, I cannot find it.
I know.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Thank God, Patty, that it started recording again.
Yes.
I was like, oh, it just went white, and I was like.